Thank you all for coming out tonight. We're really excited to have you here for the second public meeting of the Canal Street Corridor Study. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Sue Fillion. I'm the Planning Director for the Town of Brattleboro. We have our team from SLR here as well. Holly Parker, Dave Sullivan, and then on the Zoom is Brian Cody. There's Brian and Fiona, who may have, who was here and then dropped off. So Fiona will be joining. Is she back?
She's still foreign away.
Please bear with me while I try to operate this hybrid.
Hybrid.
System meeting.
Okay.
They keep going popping in the left way.
Yeah. So I'm going to turn it over to Holly and Dave to get going. We have lots to present to you, a lot to talk about as well, as time permits. We do have some handouts. We have two full copies of the presentation if anybody would like to look at it as they go along. And then I have a handout of some cross-sections and kind of the right-of-way tangle, just so that it makes a little sense. I hope you've signed in. If not, we'll send it around. It would be great if you could please sign in. And with that, I'll turn it over to Holly. Great. And I'm gonna...
Thank you. We are running slides. Yes. Good evening, everyone. We found a nice fall theme for you for the cover slide. This is our second public meeting. Thank you to all of you who came out the first time. We've been very busy, as you can see from all of our boards here, putting together concepts based on what we've learned from all of our existing conditions work. If you want to go to the next slide. So tonight, we're going to talk about the, we're just going to do a little review of the project goals and the timeline and then talk about the existing conditions work and the long-term preliminary concepts for the whole corridor that we are studying on Canal Street. And then talk about some kind of streetscape and place-making and gateway treatments that we've come up with. And towards the end, Brian's going to talk about the stormwater treatment concepts. They're, they're pretty technical, so we're kind of, kind of give a high-level introduction and then ask for some feedback. We'll also pause along the way and ask for, for feedback, so you all can, can ask questions as we, as we go through. There's, there's a lot to take in. We have 50 slides. We're going to try to get through them as quickly as possible and, and keep you interested as we do. So with that, next slide.
Can I just jump in and ask, for the people that are on Zoom, if you have a question during this portion, I can't see you, so it'd be really great if you could please put that in chat and I can take a look at that there and get your questions answered.
Yeah. Okay, great point. So just a little bit of background. The study area is Canal Street, near where it meets Exit 1 on 91. The southernmost part and the northernmost extent of the study area is near the train station at Main and Canal and where it hits South, South Main and Canal.
Bridge Street.
Sorry. Bridge, not Burge. That's going to be something to pay attention to. We're, we'll be talking about those streets. So we were tasked with understanding the background of the area. We looked at things like speeds, average speeds, average traffic volumes. We looked at the right-of-way extents. And we're trying to understand how we could make more space for bicyclists and pedestrians to use this corridor more safely, transit riders, and cars, obviously, as well. We all have to get along on the limited space that's out there. And we also wanted to kind of make it more welcoming to people coming into Brattleboro off the highway. So there was a lot to do here. So we got started in the spring. I was kind of taking your cues there.
It's a little touchy.
So, that's okay. We started in the spring of this year with a nice walking tour of the corridor. We've been collecting data through the spring and summer. Sue and other city, town staff have been talking to folks and getting feedback about the project, so getting some, some stakeholder input along the way. We obviously have this meeting and the previous meeting posted on the Story Map. This one will be posted on the Story Map, which is the project's website. And we'll be putting together draft and final plans through the winter, also with your feedback that we get tonight and that we've received so far.
So just to quickly go through these existing conditions for the stormwater, I think, Brian, maybe will walk us through these slides.
Let's just, I think, just one, two.
Yeah, sure, I can, I can do that, Holly. Thank you. Yeah, so just a quick recap on the, on the storm drainage side of things, as far as the existing conditions. So we looked at three general, different drainage areas along the corridor. The corridor for Canal Street is shown here in the yellow line. And then we have the three different colored drainage areas. The purplish color is the, the area that drains to the kettle pond, which was an important part of this analysis and study. The blue shaded area is the, what we're calling the mid Canal Street drainage area. One of the key features here is there's a diversion structure which splits the runoff at the intersection with Canal and Burge Street. And then finally, we have the downtown drainage area. So there's about 200 acres in the kettle pond drainage area, about 130 acres of drainage area in the mid Canal Street drainage and downtown, about 30 acres. And then if you notice, the red squares show where the drainage system's daylight or discharge. And those are all focused either along the Whetstone Brook or the kettle pond. So all of the drainage systems in these neighborhoods drain to those, those outfalls. You can switch to the next slide. Yeah, thank you. So the system is largely a traditional system with pipes and catch basins, generally limited water quality or water treatment measures in the, in this drainage system. The, the, let's see. So the, the systems are largely undersized and aging, so that creates issues with overland flow as the systems are not able to capture all of the drainage, which then leads to erosion and damages to, to private properties. That's indicated by the blue circles are where historically there's been some erosion or flooding of private properties. And that's generally a quick overview of the existing conditions.
Thank you. It's green, that's kind of blinking.
Can you all see this green? Okay, it's...
A little bit. Don't you want to, on this, like, this has...
Oh, am I in your way there? I'm sorry.
I'm not sure I'm going to be able to fix the blinking.
No, just stop.
It seems better...
Yeah, because I said something.
Okay.
Makes me feel powerful.
Maybe it's warm.
Oh, no.
Looking again.
Okay, it's glitching a little bit. This slide is, is just reminding us that there are some projects going on in the area that could be affecting, obviously, long-term traffic being generated and place-making opportunities. The Winston Proudie infill development could result in 300 residential units. That is outside really the study area, but of course, the traffic is going to come in on Maple Street to Canal, so that's why that's mentioned. 201 and 209 Canal Street, where the car wash was going to be expanded, that's being discussed now as a potential housing development. And then the, obviously, the Amtrak station at the northernmost, at northeasternmost extent of the study area. You know, as the bridge closes there and opens further down, that's creating opportunities to, for place-making and for more bicycle and pedestrian activity. So that's why those are mentioned. So we looked again at the, the crash locations. This is all kind of relative. You see the heat map showing, you know, it's really light up in some places, but it's, it's over five years. I guess we can't really see the title at the top, but it was from 2019 to 2024. Yeah.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you. And next slide, we have another, these are crashes just involving bicyclists and pedestrians in that same timeframe. So that's...
What was the totals there?
12 total crashes, including bicyclists and pedestrians in five years.
11 were injuries.
Four.
So with that, we're going to launch right into the street design concepts, because that's probably what you're all here to see. And Fiona is going to walk us through these.
Well, I'll go through a couple of these first.
Oh, you're gonna talk first? Okay. Dave is going to talk about the break.
I'm just gonna, Dave Sullivan, I'm just gonna spend a minute or two and talk a little bit about how the sausage is made and the process we took as we went through here. So the very basic starting point was how much right-of-way do we have to work with? So before we start getting into private property issues and things like that. And the color coding shows that, you can see it varies, and the darker the color, the more space we have. So it's a little bit challenging, because you have areas where you could do some very expansive things and you have areas where you're extremely limited. So what we tried to do is, is look at it as a, as a whole on the corridor and see what we could do for most of the corridor to get the biggest bang for the buck. Next slide, please. So this table kind of correlates to the graphic, but brings it to another, another level of detail. And what this is showing is how much space or how much width you need for different alternatives. So I'll just go through one or two here. So if we want a very basic cross-section with five-foot sidewalks, three-foot shoulder, and in this case, you would have share rows, you wouldn't have an official bike lane, and we would need 38 feet to get that cross-section in there, how we would like to see it. If we were going to add a turn lane, we would add another 10 feet. So for the sections that have turn lanes, and we want the full five-foot sidewalk and a buffer between the road and the sidewalk, then we'd need 48 feet. So this is the, the process we use to come up with the various cross-sections that were usable within the existing right-of-way. Next slide, please. I'll talk about this quickly. This could really be a little bit later in the presentation. But we're going to be showing pedestrian treatments. And when you see them on the plan, we've, we've used a standard treatment, shown crosswalks, but there's many ways to do crosswalks. And I think you'll see in some of the plans, we use something like this, which is a stamped concrete. It, it makes the crosswalks more high-visibility, therefore safer. Of course, you could do high-visibility paint and have the standard white crosswalks, but these are just some of the different things. So a standard crosswalk, one level of safety is to make it high-visibility. Another improvement could be a refuge island, so you only have to cross half the road at a time. Another thing that we might look at is curb extensions, and that's shortening the crosswalk so you don't have as long of the trip. And then you can get, you could implement raised crosswalks, and if you want to take it a step further, you could raise a whole intersection. So all of these things have different effectiveness when it comes to pedestrian safety, and they also have certain practicalities depending on the facility that we're looking at. Next slide, please. So this is kind of a graphic representation of what that table is. And these are, are, these two particular ones are ones that we looked at in our, I'll call it our more aspirational concepts, which we'll go through. But you can see here, the orange is, the orange shows the motor vehicle travel lanes. So you have the turn lane, 10 or 11-foot travel lanes. Then we want to have buffer between the travel lanes, the cars, and in this case, the bike lane, and then a buffer between the bikes and the sidewalk. So that, that shows what that whole cross-section would measure out at. And in this particular case, depending on how wide we make these buffers, you need somewhere between 54 and 64 feet. We could reduce that a little bit. And in this case, instead of having two five-foot bike lanes, we have one 10-foot cycle track. The way we save a little space doing a cycle track is because you'll see that this yellow buffer is much smaller than one of these yellow buffers. The green buffers remain the same. So you're able to save a little bit of space. And a bike cycle track is a two-way, so all the bikes are on one side of the road. Next slide, please.
Did I make a comment yet, or no?
Sure.
Yeah? About your previous one. So I've done a lot of cycling where the cycle track and the pedestrians, you don't even have a buffer, and it's very safe. In other words, all there is, is paint, and the paint shows on one side, bicycles, and the paint on the other side shows feet. And then it's been in Europe where I've done it, but the point is, that would save you even more because, because...
Yes.
Of that, okay?
Yep.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, for example, that's why we're drawing a range here.
Right.
Because we could reduce a lot of those buffers. They could be as little as a curb, for example, just to delineate. These two cross-sections are even further reduced. And in this case, we're, we're looking at what happens if we combine the pedestrians and the bicyclists? So we make the sidewalks wider, use a multi-use path, and we have one on each side here. And again, the, this is an eight-foot multi-use path, which is about the minimum you, you want to safely have. 10-foot is more, is more of a preferential thing. But I think what this does is it shows you, it gives you a guide of, you know, the different options that we're working with to be able to provide bike lanes, safe sidewalks, proper buffers, and proper lane widths, certainly minimum lane widths is what we strive for. Next slide. Another thing you'll see as we go through the drawings, in some places, we call out RFB, which is a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. You may be aware of those. There are some around town. There's one actually on Canal Street. And typically, you would use this for slower speeds, narrower sections. It flashes when activated. It could be activated all the time, but that usually they're not. Usually you have to press the button. And it basically is warning a motorist that there's a pedestrian crossing, something like this, because you want them on both sides of the road, probably 30 to 60, depending if it's solar or if there were some underground electrification that was needed. Most of these are solar, but sometimes you can't do it because of tree cover and things like that. The Hawk, on the other hand, is a high-intensity activated crosswalk. This, as you can see, is much more elaborate, so the signal faces cross out actually into the road. So it's not a, a full red-yellow-green traffic light that you see at an intersection for cars, but it does have the same symbols. It has the, the red, and it has the flash, it has flashing red, and then it has yellow. And then it goes dark when there's no pedestrians, so there's no light indication. These are more appropriate for higher speeds, higher pedestrian traffic, higher, longer crossing widths. And again, it, it really has the same purpose to warn vehicles to stop because there's pedestrians in the crosswalk. It's much more expensive. We estimate $125,000 to $150,000 for, for that. Next, please. So, so I'm gonna ask Fiona to go through the concepts. And the first set of concepts you'll see are what we feel is needed if you want to accommodate everything that is our multimodal goal. We want to accommodate bikes, we want to accommodate pedestrians, we want to include buffers. In many cases, we have to maintain the turn lanes. In some cases, we reduce median widths and things like that. And to do that, there are some ramifications. Some of those ramifications are going over right-of-way, for example. And, you know, those are pointed out here, because you can see the right-of-way lines on here, and you can see how close it gets at that particular location. But Fiona will go through these. We'll talk a little bit about a couple of special areas where we had our landscape architects look at it more holistically, what it might look like after, when it's built or when it's designed, what, what the intersections may look like. And then Fiona will come back, and she'll talk a little bit about what we can do quickly. We call it quick build. And on the quick build, we tried to almost eliminate any physical widening. In some cases, we have a few islands and curb extensions that you'll point out that we think would be important even in the quick build, but most of it is sidewalk rehabilitation, closing gaps where they exist, improving sidewalks, narrowing lanes as best possible, things of that nature, adding crosswalks and adding some of the crosswalk infrastructure. So with that being said, I'll let Fiona take over this side.
So all these plans, do they not require, I mean, they use existing right-of-way?
The first set of plans you'll see has, do have some right-of-way ramifications. The second set of plans do not.
Ramification, meaning you're gonna have to...
Meaning there may be a, a, either an easement or something of that nature to get the full cross-section. The other thing I'll point out is where we could, we used the cycle track concept, and in this particular case, Fiona will point it out, but we start the cycle track there and go to more standard bike lanes in this section, because it fits better and it works better with the roundabout. But I'll let her go through these plans, and then we could get the type a little deeper.
This is going to be quick. With the Hawk, do you have it at, wouldn't you want it by with a roundabout, because that's more high-intensity?
Well, we would need four of them.
Yeah, okay.
So what we do here is we have the crosswalk shown, and sorry Fiona if I steal some of your thunder, but it's located in, in a location where you're far enough from the roundabout that the visibility to the crosswalk and the pedestrians is good, and the median is wide enough so that pedestrians only have to cross one barrel at a time.
Yeah, because that's right over there by Price Shop or the school. That's why I mentioned that.
But we, we understand there's, you know, there's a lot of this, and that's the reason why we think maybe a Hawk makes more sense there as opposed to an RFB. But again, you know, even an RFB would have, have value there.
Right.
So Fiona?
All right, can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. And I also just wanted to say that I think all these concepts are mounted on boards, they're on the room, so if they're a little bit hard to see on the slides, you know, get up close to one on a board. And these are all rotated slightly, so this first one is around 90 degrees turned, so north is on the right side of the page, west is at the top, so when I'm saying northwest, whatever, just keep that in mind. So as Dave said, throughout our concepts, we are recommending, or we're showing the cycle track. One of the things we're also showing is new sidewalks throughout the corridor. On our field visit, we found that there were portions of the sidewalks that were in disrepair, and most of the sidewalks were less than five feet, which is generally considered the minimum standard. So throughout, in yellow, we're showing new sidewalks being installed on either side of Canal Street. So on this concept, starting at the southern end of the corridor, left side of the page, the roundabout number eight is, we're showing bike lanes with buffers starting north of Generous Street. And the big thing on this concept is obviously the roundabout, so we would replace the traffic signal with a roundabout. And there's an option to add gateway signage. We'll actually show this in context in a later slide. And we understand that the school is nearby, it's also, you know, a grocery store is there, there's several commercial points of interest. So we understand that transitioning pedestrians and cyclists, particularly, particularly in this area, is important. So through the roundabout, for example, pedestrians and cyclists wouldn't enter into the traffic stream, like cyclists would transition onto a 10-foot shared multi-use path that would be shared with pedestrians. We're also showing at the roundabout splitter islands and crosswalks across those islands, which would offer refuge to pedestrians. So someone could cross one leg of traffic, stand at a median, and cross the other leg of traffic, and that's a pedestrian refuge island. So continuing past the roundabout north, the cyclists would transition from the multi-use path back to bike lanes until they get to Fairview Street, at which point we are starting the cycle track. So at that crossing, which would be pretty major, you have cyclists who are going from bike lane to cycle track or vice versa, and anticipating a lot of pedestrians to be crossing. We're showing a Hawk pedestrian beacon. As Dave said, that could be an RFB instead, but we are recommending that some sort of crossing beacon or assistance be installed just north of the intersection at Fairview Street at that crosswalk. There is a median as well that continues north on Canal Street as you continue on the corridor, and we're recommending that that be formalized in some way. It's currently just striped, so that could be formalized with either curving or even changing the color and texture of that portion of the road would help to create more of a median. So we're recommending that to stretch until the left lane picks back up again. And again, we're showing a cycle track on the east side of the street and five-foot sidewalks throughout. So next concept. The difference here is rather than having a roundabout, we're maintaining the traffic signal, but we're recommending upgrades to the signal equipment and refining some of the corridor radii, which are a little bit wide right now, potentially adding in stamped concrete or asphalt sidewalks, adding in bicycle crossings as well. And we are also recommending that that channelized right turn lane be removed and the whole intersection be consolidated. And the rest of the recommendations, as you continue north, are consistent with Option A. So there are bike lanes on either side of the street, which then transition to a two-way cycle track at Fairview Street. And we're showing a Hawk pedestrian beacon and a crossing at Fairview. And we're also showing that formalized center median on Canal Street with five-foot sidewalks on both sides. Okay. Next slide.
Quick question. Um, just in those ones, I guess on both of them, are you showing, with regards to the bike lane, are you showing the curb between the bike lane and the sidewalk or between the bike lane and the road?
Both.
Both?
Both.
Okay.
So it's hard to see at the scale.
Yeah, it's hard to see.
But this little bit of green is a three-foot separation, and then there is a small separation between the sidewalk and the...
And then on the, what about to the south there?
To the south here?
Yeah.
This bike lane... This bike lane, well, you have to go back to, this is on-road with a painted buffer.
Okay.
So it's not the raised buffer.
Yep, yep.
I have a question about the, sorry.
I just was wondering, do the bikes go through the pedestrian crosswalk at, like at the, if you do the traffic circle or this slide, either way, where do the, I have never been able to figure out where bikes are supposed to cross at a traffic circle.
So what we did here, and so this yellow is a sidewalk only.
Okay.
And this is an on-road bike lane. So this bike lane, it would be a ramp here. And then this five-foot sidewalk would become a ten-foot shared path. So the bikes would go along the outside and they would cross here.
Okay.
And then it goes back to a single five-foot sidewalk. If you're on this side, it stays until you get back to the, out of the roundabout. And then you would get to the separated facilities.
So does that mean if you're going, going south on Canal Street and you want to make a left-hand turn onto a fair, fair, is it fairground? That you need to then get in the bike, in the sidewalk, cross a pedestrian crossway, get in the, go again to cross another pedestrian and then...
Proceed.
And then proceed, so you've got to dismount several times.
So you would come here, you would have cross here, cross here, and then go.
Technically, as a cyclist entering a crosswalk, you're supposed to dismount.
Yeah.
And walk your bike. We know that that's not really how the behavior generally works, but that's...
And are the, is this concept thought to be safer for bicyclists to have a roundabout?
Yes, well, the roundabout, I'm not sure if a roundabout is safer. But if you have a roundabout, it's safer to do it this way than it is just by any other way. Sometimes they'll run the bike lanes through the outside. They'll have a separated bike lane on the outside of the roundabout. And that, in my opinion, I don't like mixing, particularly in a roundabout, cars and bicyclists. Would a traditional intersection, traditional intersection would be safer and more, more normal, more typical for a bicyclist, I believe.
The tip, yeah, the street, what more is there right now?
Yeah.
The roundabout slows traffic too, so that slows the cars. Cars being slower makes it safer.
I mean, you've got your beacons and so on, but it's difficult to, if you're trying to cross, you need to like address the question of the traffic coming from behind you that's making a right-hand turn. So it's more risky, complex than if you actually have a light that tells you now you can cross. Because otherwise...
It is, a traffic light with pedestrian indications and crosswalks would be the safest way to do it and the most traditional way to do it as well.
Yeah, I have to add with that too, because that's a busy area right there alone. And for the bicyclists to cross over, dismount, cross over, dismount to go back, that's...
They're not gonna do it.
They're not gonna do it.
Yeah, they're not gonna do it.
And often, and the cars are coming in a way that when you're, when you're crossing, you've really got to like, where are these cars? And they're not gonna see you either because you're farther into the...
Right, I just, I'd be like, I bike a lot and I would probably just get in the car lane and be a car. But there's a lot of bicyclists who aren't gonna do that and who are...
They're not at the level you are. If it's a level three bicyclist or something like that, then they would probably follow.
But I don't think that's like, that's not a thing to assume that people should do. Because I don't think that's very safe. But there, there might be people who try to, who are confused about what to do and maybe try to do that.
In general, there's a lot of visual cues here that are gonna slow cars.
That's true.
So there's different materials, different colors. There's narrower lanes, there's the roundabout, all these things slow the traffic. And that makes the environment safer for people walking.
And also adding highly to you, you have people with carriages and walkers because there's a scene right there.
Yeah, that's a great point.
And there's a bike, that's gonna slow it up so much.
You would think it would slow it up, but those kids are gonna be coming from the high school who are now level one driver.
Right.
So it doesn't matter if you're a bicycle or not.
Got my license. You know, yeah. So factoring that, plus the highway right there, people zooming off. And on there, the highway right there.
There's lots of cars coming off.
Yeah.
Do I understand that the advantage, the reason that you might want to put a circle there is to slow traffic?
Yes.
And it slows, I mean, obviously a traffic light also slows traffic.
Well, the one in front there now certainly slows traffic.
You're gonna change.
A traffic light stops traffic, a circle lets it continue to move, so it...
Yeah, in roundabouts, and the collisions at roundabouts, you may get a fraction more minor collisions.
Yeah.
But it eliminates the more serious collisions, the high-intensity collisions.
So in a normal world, if the traffic lights are conducive or motion sensors to keep the flow, as we know, in that particular section and further down, we already know that that's not gonna be the case. So with the new lights, that might make a difference rather than having a roundabout and having those cross, because you have to come from out of Price Shop or people with walkers, bikes, you know, that thing's gonna be congested. And people are not gonna wait, cover, almost work for getting on there, plus the patrol and such. I just can't see that.
Let me say another thing about it too. And it doesn't come out, these are engineering-ish drawings. What doesn't come out in these drawings is we're trying to set a mood for Canal Street. And this is the first place we have that opportunity.
Right.
When we show you the LA, the landscape architecture planes, you'll see we have some gateway signage and it's planted. And we can give you a visual, but it's, and the roundabout is a great way to say, you've arrived. And hopefully that has some kind of psychological effect as you continue for the next mile when you get into town.
No, I'm sure, I mean, that works well in key, but you know, we've had a little different monster. It comes to traffic now where it's a lot more wider in key. They love the roundabouts down there and it flows better compared like even other one of, I mean, from my experience. And like you said, with the high school, the Price Shop are there, senior, it's Duncan. That, there's a lot of cars coming in and out of a lot of businesses up there from my experience. And I just try to visualize in my head, seeing how...
We have some really good people. I think this is all like good feedback and helping us figure out, is the roundabout right? Because there are benefits to flow, to slowing down cars, but there's drawbacks. So this is good feedback and then, yeah.
And that line, you know, when I come, I'm, I'm an injured bicyclist. My approach now is when I'm crossing a road, when I'm, you know, so I'm gonna go across the crosswalk, I want to make sure that every car that's possibly gonna hit me knows that I'm there. So I'm gonna wait till they stop. So I'm not gonna trust the drivers on the, going south on Canal Street, that they're gonna see me or somehow avoid me if I'm in the crosswalk. So I will, I will wait till they stop and then they're gonna obstruct completely the roundabout traffic.
Right, why, she's looking at safety, I mean, I look at the sizzle, but the stake of it, the meat of it is just as the scene.
Well, it's, again, it's, what you're pointing out is useful and certainly is something that needs to be considered whenever you're doing a roundabout. So, you know, again, that's why we do these studies and we look at options. And we'll, as we, you know, we're gonna talk about next steps till the end.
Right.
But we're gonna take this feedback, we're gonna take these drawings, we're gonna do a report. And the report will talk about the pros and cons of this alternative. So, but this is all tremendous, tremendous input.
Thank you for going back and forth.
We have a questioner coming in the back and then one from the chat, so.
Oh, no video, please, just because my kids are here.
Oh, sorry.
Thanks. I just, somebody may have shared this already, but it's common for bicyclists and drivers to zip through the Walgreens parking lot to avoid the traffic light when they're turning left. And if there's a way to keep people safe from that or to, in some way deter it in your design, that would help both options.
They do, they zip through there.
So...
Where again?
So discouraging happening or encouraging?
If they're coming towards the highway.
Discouraged.
If they're gonna turn on the fairground road, which a lot of people do, having going through school, both bicyclists and drivers, they'll cut across pretty unexpectedly to take the Walgreens parking lot and avoid that way at the left-hand turn.
Right.
So you get a lot of unexpected sharp turns in there, bicyclists and drivers both do it.
That's really good.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah.
Actually, it will be safer for them to do it under one of, either of these concepts because we'll have this bike crossing there with whatever the hawk or the RFB. And we'll get them across, not quite at the same location, but at least it'll be a safer way to get across.
Right, or they'll cut across from Canal Street down into Walgreens, they have fairgrounds as well. Because the entrance goes in and out.
Yeah, I'm not sure how you discourage that other than closing Walgreens drive-boys.
Right.
So we have a chat question. It says, where the two-way cycle track is created, will cyclists going north need to cross to keep going north? Kathleen, I wonder if you mean cross to...
To go south.
To go south. Because north is to the right of the screen. You can unmute Kathleen if you...
Oh, oh, okay, yeah.
Okay.
I was confused. But I'm confused about where, where the two-way cycle track, when it stops, then does a bicyclist have to cross the street to go?
South.
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 Yes.
Yes.
At Fairview, for example.
Yes. So if you're coming south on the cycle track, when you get to Fairview, I'm not sure if you can see it from virtually, but there's a green crosswalk, you know, a white crosswalk. The green is a bike lane. So that's where you would cross and this goes from two-way to one-way. So if you wanted to continue south, you would jump over to the west side of the road.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So can you go to, okay, there we go. All right, Fiona, you're back up.
All right, my turn. Okay, so continuing on to the north, the cycle track continues on the east side of Canal Street, sidewalks both sides of the street. In general, at the intersections of Canal Street at side streets, we're recommending to refine the corner radii where it's a little too wide right now, evaluating ADA accessibility where necessary. And upgrading the crossings. There is an existing RFB near Belmont Ave., which is where the hospital is. So we want to maintain that where it is. We're also showing some sort of pedestrian refuge island for people who are crossing near Oak Grove and Belmont. Then I want to draw your attention to the right side of the page, which is the intersection of Canal at Maple Street and Pine Street. And the, as you go down Canal Street, past the hospital, the grades are pretty significant. There's also a pretty steep grade on the shoulder at the corner of Maple Street and Canal Street, which limits the sightlines. So for various reasons, we're recommending that that intersection of Maple and Pine be converted to all-way stop control rather than Canal Street continuing to be free-flowing as it is right now. As part of that, we'd also be able to add in a crosswalk across Canal Street at this intersection. And in this concept, we're maintaining the left turn lane from Canal Street onto Maple. But we are removing the left turn lane from Canal Street onto Pine Street, which is out there today. Okay, next concept. And the only change here is the intersection of Maple Street and Pine Street. Everything to the south is the same, so we're finding the corner radii, the cycle track, sidewalks, et cetera. In this concept, we would, we're recommending to realign Pine Street so it intersects Canal Street opposite Main Street, which does have pretty significant right-of-way and grade impacts. And this, in this scenario, we would still be converting that to all-way stop. And we would still be removing the left turn lane from Canal Street onto Pine Street and converting that into a pedestrian refuge island for people crossing.
Yeah, go ahead, Richard.
At that intersection, when it's redone, are cars gonna be stopping there?
That's the intention, yes.
So because coming out of Maple Street is a nightmare, you can't see the cars coming.
Nope, correct. That's the primary reason for recommendation.
Will you be willing to toggle back and forth between the two just a couple times? Okay.
So that one is a light or that one's four-way stop also? They're both four-way stop.
Yes.
The only difference in this one is we're taking Pine Street. It makes it a little bit more efficient for the all-way stop control. But again, it's not an inexpensive change because it's not like that's a big wide open field over there you'd be dealing with.
Excavation.
So I'd like to just raise a concern and I don't know, I don't have an alternative approach. And I appreciate that there's a, that there's a dedicated bike, whatever you call it.
Cycle track.
Cycle track. But, but the area that I would have concern is when it intersects, say, Clark Street or Oak, Oak Grove, the bikes are gonna be off of the, they're not gonna be in the main traffic zone and the cars are not gonna be as aware of them. They're gonna be basically on their cycle track, the cars are not gonna be thinking so much about that. And when they're taking a right-hand turn, the, there's a risk that they're gonna hit, if the, if the cyclists on the cycle track are thinking that they can just proceed through Clark Avenue and Oak Grove intersection, then, and they're also maybe gonna be less aware of the, of the car traffic. There's a high risk of, or a higher risk of an accident where the, where that right-turning car hits the cyclist. And that just happens to be, there were two fatalities in Cambridge a couple of months ago. And they both were the exact same traffic configuration, which was, was that. That basically the bikes, bikes were in the, in the crosswalk area and hit by a right-turning, happened to be a truck. So it's great to have the cycle track, but that area of intersection is fraught.
Yeah, and that's, that's a problem whether it's the cycle track or a bike lane. And it's, it's something that is atop the mind of a lot of people researching these things these days. And there are some, I won't call them solutions, some, some things that you could do at like a signalized intersection to make that right turn happen slower. You, you could narrow up the radii with paint and things like that. You know, it's, it's a condition that, essentially the same condition you have for pedestrians. So you need to, you know, and maybe that this, this whole corridor, once it becomes bike-friendly, we need to alert motorists. There's MUTCD signs that are starting to be used in, for pedestrian crosswalks that says, you know, if you're taking a right turn, I don't know the exact wording, but there's a crosswalk there and there's gonna be people crossing, so be aware of that. So there is some signage we could do. But it's certainly whenever you have two relatively free-flow movements, you need that visibility to each other, you need to warn each other. And bicyclists should treat it like you would if you were a pedestrian and not just zip across. I know bicyclists have more propensity to just zip across because they're going faster and stopping is, is more disruptive to their trip, but...
And as you mentioned... And as you mentioned, um making that turn sharper, so the car has to slow down more to make the turn is um another...
Right, and we have, we have, we have taken these radii, you can see this, this green up here, for example. Um the radii on some of these intersections are sloppy, and so you get some extra pavement, they've gotten worn out over the years. So you can tighten them, um you wanna be careful that you don't tighten too much, so that a, you know, the mail truck can get around, and uh, you know, things like that. So there's, there's a happy medium. But certainly in an environment like this, where we wanna slow people, I think um the radii should be appropriately uh reduced. And I think we're showing fairly tight radii on most of the stuff. There's a couple of areas where we know it's critical, um that we had to leave the radii open, uh but for the most part, I think Fiona mentioned that we did take a look at these. And the, the clean radii and tight radii also allow you to get better ADA accommodations with the ramps and things like that. Cause those big wide intersections, when you put the ADA ramp, if you're still on the radius, kinda points you in the wrong direction. Uh for the uh, uh for those with uh sight, sighting issues especially, so.
We have a question or comment?
Yes.
Hey, what about improving lighting? Um cause bicyclists are invisible at night. So if you just make sure that anywhere a bicycle is gonna be crossing these intersection has really good lighting, that could really help them not relying on bicycles being dressed properly.
And yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll touch on lighting a little bit, because that's something that, that's important, and it's one of the, you know, we're gonna wanna establish a palette through here, so that people have a feeling and know where they are. So we want a lot of commonalities, and one of those things is lighting. You know, what do you do with lighting to let people know that they're on Canal Street? You know, so.
We also have uh like a strobe light in town when a train is coming through, we've got a lot of crossing. You know, when you're coming out of a parking garage, there'll be a little light flashing. I wonder if there could be anything like that, that you could have a sensor that a bike's coming by, and then just have a little light or a strobe or something to let...
Yeah, my, my guess is by the time a light gets activated, the bike's probably gone.
Yeah, it would have to be a block up.
Yeah.
Well, my last question, I feel like, Flumbo, if you keep that four-way, keep that, get rid of the island, and the other, and once you've got across with the four-way, can you put that four-way back up, Sue, since that's possible? So you have this, you could eliminate this and that, cause you're already on, and that traffic will flow, I was just saying, that might...
You're saying eliminate the street?
Well, no, you get rid of this pedestrian refuge island, you don't, cause if you have a four-way, you're already on that, keeps the traffic flowing, so you don't need this and this, cause you're already on that side of the street, with the four-way. So why would you need the island here? Why would you need three? And then, if the four-way, you're coming here, I think, cause this is your millionaire to go to Belmont to the hospital.
You might come from a different...
Yeah.
If you're coming from Oak Grove or Park, you need those.
I mean, if you still have that crosswalk on either side, that gives the traffic more time to flow.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, this pedestrian park, pedestrian park, pedestrian.
That's, that's not gonna impede to the traffic flow, though. It's gonna make it safer for pedestrians.
Well, I'm sorry, how many pedestrian crosswalks you mean on?
Again, if you have a four-way, you know... The pedestrians are gonna cross, whether the crossing is there or not.
Exactly.
So you might as well put the crosswalk there, cause if we, if we were to get rid of that, nobody's walking downhill.
Well, I'm just trying to eliminate the extra course done, you don't need it.
The other thing is crosswalks, the presence of crosswalk slows traffic down, whether or not there's a pedestrian in it.
Well, so...
Well, it does, it does.
Down Main Street, that doesn't work, so, yeah. And, and the malfunction junction, you know, so that's, that's relative, but nonetheless, I'm just thinking, if you have a four-way, you've already made your choice of what side of the street. You already have the pedestrian over here, cause you're gonna get to the hospital regardless once you cross that street. Now, do you need one there, and you can't just walk down and close it?
Well, unless, unless you're coming from...
Then there's the schools, how about the schools, Gary? There's like, you know, to just say, there's uh Oak Grove schools there, so you've got parents and...
Right, and see, Oak Grove, you have that crosswalk right here, that when you're coming down, better.
The one's better.
Yeah.
I mean, you can...
Yeah, you can do, it'll take your point. Fiona?
Yep, all right.
Three A.
Here we go, three A. Okay, so the main thing here is the intersection at Washington Street and Burge Street. Um so this is, oh yeah, so the Maple Pine, you can see that. Um and something that I wanna point out as we transition into this area is that cycle track is pretty wide and does take up some space, and so um that comes with um sacrificing some of the space that's currently used for on-street parking, uh in different areas for the cycle track. Uh and in other concepts, we put the on-street parking back in where we could, but just wanted to highlight that, um that there is some on-street parking that has to be removed or relocated in order to accommodate the cycle track. So uh as that continues, um and we see the Washington-Burge intersection, we're also recommending that this intersection um be converted to all-way stop. Um this intersection is kind of seen as an opportunity for another gateway, another moment. Um and that's something that uh we'll highlight a little bit later. Um but one of the things that we're showing on this, which could actually be applied to any of the crosswalks, is um the stamped concrete, so the crosswalks here are shown in red. Um and in this concept, we also realign them slightly. Some of the crosswalks are slightly skewed and a little bit too long. Um so we squared them up as we could, uh and again, uh refining corner radii and evaluating ADA accessibility as needed. Um and something that we're doing throughout this particular area uh is also um making some recommendations for managing driveway access. Uh starting here, there's quite a few curb cuts, um might even say an excessive number, and a lot of pavement, and we wanna um kind of consolidate those as it makes sense and as feasible. So we're showing some of those consolidated um driveways at some of these um businesses and residences. So like the uh, the gas station is like wide open right now, so we're showing like a, you know, consolidating that into like two main driveways, for example. Um so that's the main part of this. And then as you continue north, um some of the on-street parking on, was removed um to the north of Burge-Washington Street as well. So this is concept A, and then if you toggle, maybe toggle a little bit between A and B, and B, we're removing the left-turn lanes. So there were, there are currently left-turn lanes from Canal Street onto Burge Street and Canal Street onto Washington Street, as shown in this concept. Um we're maintaining them in A, and B, we're removing those and converting them to pedestrian refuge islands. Um and the, eh, pedestrian refuge islands are like throughout all of these concepts, because they help pedestrians cross more safely. They only have to cross, you know, one direction of traffic at a time before they can stop and continue on their way. Um so...
Let me just interject one thing. If you could toggle one more time, so. The other thing that this does, you could see, now these right-of-way lines are from GPS mapping, so we don't know exactly how accurate they are. Uh but you could see, this concept, because we're maintaining a left-turn lane, we're actually dipping a little bit over the, there, there would be a right-of-way impact. When we get rid of the left-turn lanes, we no longer have that impact. So uh th- these are the things that, if the, if and when these go to design, those are the types of things that will really be finessed.
And just to be clear, the black outline means it's hard curving?
Yes, those are the new curbs.
And that's a uh elevation change from the roadway to the whatever.
Yes, to the curb, yes, there's a reveal on the curb, right? Yes.
Quick question. Um what, I, I just have, I don't know that I've ever been at a stopped sign intersection where there's a left-turn turn lane and both lanes are stopping. Um it makes sense to me, but are there, I assume that there's precedent for that? Out in the world?
There, there is precedent, but there's also precedent for removing them.
Gotcha, okay.
So they um, it's, it's basically what they call dual threat. So when you have two lanes of traffic...
Oh, yeah.
When you have two, two lanes of traffic, the ability, uh what could happen is, and a lot of times you see them when they're both through because of capacity, but that car on the curb side may be stopped, and a pedestrian gets the sense of security, and they start crossing, but there's a car behind it, a smaller car that they don't see, and that's called the dual threat.
Bradley Street, that's Bradley Street, yeah.
So if, if possible, unless it's a capacity constraint, where you're really gonna move the cars through, um you try to avoid the two-lane approaches and stops.
Right, 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 cool. That's helpful, thank you.
Okay, on to concept four. This doesn't have an A and B, this is just the one. So uh this, uh we're continuing north, continuing with the cycle track. Uh and at Elm Street, um we're recommending to realign that approach to tee it up a little bit better with Canal Street, that corner where Elm and Canal meet is um a mess, you know? So um we're recommending to realign it slightly and adding in some additional curbing, um as well as some sidewalk there, which would make the crossing for pedestrians across the um the Market driveway and across Elm Street easier. And uh we're also um showing a slightly relocated bus shelter. Um we are also recommending on the east side of Canal Street to install an additional bus shelter. Um and sort of, there are several bus routes that go through and pass this intersection, so, you know, creating sort of a, a, a more welcoming environment for people who are waiting for their buses. Um this is the only uh existing bus shelter on Canal Street, actually, is that one that's at the corner of Canal and Elm. Um so as we continue north of Elm Street...
I have questions. I actually own Veganaya, and I can tell you in the last two and a half years that I have owned that business, I've seen at least ten accidents, I've seen two people get hit in the last three weeks, because there is not a light where the stop sign is, when you come around, people do not see it. I've seen semis cut through that thing at thirty, forty miles an hour. There's a school right there, there needs to be some lighting, but that means a blinking light, hi, so all the people that are coming into that place can see it, I think that'll be the best route. And I've been crossing that street, I live on Clark Street, my family owned that house for almost fifty years, and I own it now. And I cross that street every day, and it's like putting my life in my own hands, every day. My kids did it. Um I was trying to get the crossing guard, Charlie, to come to, today, just so he can put his input in. That man is the nicest man in the world, and I see him raising his voice and yelling every day, cause there's kids, there's a school, there's kids coming down and get to that store, and they're all around there. And they're coming into town for Fridays that are busy. It is, it's the most unhinged road crossing that we have in town. And I, trust me, I've seen it for thirty years, and I would just, that is the reason why I'm here today, is cause I get that we wanna have the flow come down, but I also think that place needs light, it needs to be seen. There's a lot of trucks coming down here, and they're coming up from Sertasimo's right there.
Um we fully understand what you, what you're saying. My first um uh close-up look at that intersection was when we did the wa, the um, the walk, oh yeah. And my, probably do my facial expression when we got there was, that it's completely uncontrolled. There's um a little uh priority of direction of how to do things. Um out in front of your place, even the striping is a little bit confusing, cause is it a parking space or is it not a parking space?
Right, right.
So that, that's confusing.
Is it a turning lane? You'd be surprised how many people do that.
And, and, and again, that's the right of way. So our intention here, and I'll, I'll get back to your specific comments, our intention was to close this up as best we could, make it more controlled, um make the, the, the radii, make this two separate things, the driveway and the road, so it's not one big sea of asphalt there. Um and um again, it is, it's always stop-controlled, but what you're saying is something that um we didn't consider, maybe we should, and we'll look at it, and perhaps uh, you know, goes into our final report. But y- you could do a flashing beacon, if visibility to that is an issue, and there is some grade here.
Yeah, there's definitely, they don't see it.
So, you know, there, there may be something, there's a couple of ways you could do it, do advanced warning that says stop sign ahead, or you can do the uh, um the flashing, all red balls, the single lens on each approach, that's, that's something.
Why would you, why would you not do a four-way or a three-way hanging light that hangs up so just, so that they're coming from either way from coming up the hill?
Right.
Cause you know, you know, that's like a log pad.
Yes.
Um and coming down the hill, you're gaining speed since Washington, and just...
Like in High Oak?
Yeah, the side, so they can see it from a wa, you know, that gives them a heads up that it's coming, you know, there's a lot of traffic.
Yes, absolutely. So most of the time, when you see the single flashers in all directions, two of them are yellow, two of them are red.
Right.
But you can use them, in this particular case, DLT will have something to say about that, but that's something that he can...
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um point to that, um on Thursday, next Thursday, eight AM, is Traffic Safety Committee.
Right.
Gary submitted a safety action request about this, and we'll be discussing it at that meeting.
Awesome.
Um we have some ideas about advanced, like, lighting with the advanced, like...
Yeah, dark over there, too.
You know, the stop sign's coming, but um you can look for that agenda tomorrow on the town's website, or you can, I'll get your email address, I will send it to you.
Sure.
That's a Zoom or in-person meeting, so.
And I have to admit, too, I did, you know, Sue's great about that, because I've mentioned that, and even with him sitting, and I mentioned it to you as well.
Yeah.
That is a high dangerous area, and that's why some of the statistics aren't updated. People blow that stop sign, cops are there all the time.
It's a nest for the, the, the police get to sit there and, you know, I mean, probably make a quota if they have one, for tickets.
I don't need the word speed bumps or whatever, I don't care what spikes.
I sit out in front of there and just watch, I said, we should get a record numbers and be like, that was a good stop, that's not a good stop, you know?
I mean, he literally has to come out and tell them stop.
Thank you for sharing that, Ed.
Thank you, welcome.
We'll definitely take it into account for this plan, but also, next Thursday is a...
Good, um crossing guard before that, that's three times, three times.
That's definitely why, because they're so close to being in that area.
They're gonna look at the radius.
Yeah.
Re-injury in front of the also. It's one of the highest injury locations for crashing.
Yeah.
And, and it's small for the trucks to turn down.
Yes.
Yep.
And by the way, we did leave this radius larger than other radii, and Sue had pointed that out when she was reviewing the...
Yeah, cause you got Sertasimo trucks that go down in the winter, that place, I mean, they come so close, clipping.
Tom, do you have your hand up there?
Yeah, um throughout these drawings, how wide are the shoulders, if there are any?
Um, three feet, if there are shoulders, yes. Right, Fiona, you can tell me with that, are they three feet or two?
Um there, uh, there aren't, in these ones, there aren't shoulders. There's buffers, but we don't have shoulders between the, we have just the eleven-foot travel lanes.
There's buffer.
So there are eleven-foot travel lanes, so they could be striped at a one-foot shoulder. Thank you, shoulder is important. And a lot of times, the shoulders are important, because they give you another um, um cube of um horizontal curvature.
Now, that parking in front of Portland Glass, is that parking?
To follow, to follow up, so if it's an eleven-foot lane, and then there's a raised cycle track or sidewalk next to it, it's, it's right at the edge of the lane is a curb?
No, yeah, there's, there's actually three feet of separation, sorry, I misunderstood. There's not a shoulder, there's three feet of separation between the traveling and the cycle track, um if not wider.
Yes, A's, asphalt, raised sidewalk?
Well, again, we'll, we'll look at some of the treatments that, that could be considered, but, you know, and these, um we're showing it um as green, so that would make me think it's, it's hard to tell at this scale, but...
And is the bike rail, um bike track that is in front of the restaurant there, is that taking away the parking from that side? The only parking that my restaurant has?
Over here?
Yeah, yeah.
Looks like it, yes.
It does.
You know, theoretically, we could, we could dig it a little further and get a couple of spaces closer.
We have parking.
But you wouldn't, you wouldn't have the, those um loosey-goosey spaces.
I mean, parking across the street is Portland Glass.
No, no, see, when they have the lines, they're gonna be adding like parking right there. there.
No, parking is already there. Those are, parking on the other side.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is good.
The parking you have, people do use that for vegan Ape.
They do, yeah?
Yeah. I actually think, as somebody who goes to your restaurant, I would rather park back there than put my car in place where people treat it like a right-hand turn lane.
I know, it's really crazy up there.
Yeah, it's, you're in a rough spot. But I think, I honestly, like, most of the time, those spaces there are open, and Portland Glass law is always open.
Yeah, it's always open after five, but the guys next to them are not.
Well, isn't that what Harry did?
That's what it is.
We have a break?
Well, actually, no, and, and the thing about that, he just repaved the whole thing, and he, and he just, we just got our sidewalk.
Right.
Which is great. So they are doing that work, but I don't know as far as the parking, it's a lot tailored to parking up there in certain, and the wintertime, too, that's another thing. It's come winter, the cars can't be there.
Let's be mindful of the time we get a lot of slides left. Oh, do we, do we get more on that?
No, that's, that's.
That was the rest of it, as long as everyone saw that there's the on-street parking that we're adding on both sides to sort of formalize that parking, so it's not quite as loosey-goosey as it is right now. Okay, this is our, our last of the sort of long-term concepts. So starting on the left-hand side, we've got two options as you, in the Clark Street, South Main Street area. So we have the cycle track continuing until it reaches Clark Street, and we're looking at option A here. And in option A, we would end the cycle track at Clark Street, and we would add in an, a beacon, an RFB, for example, for crossing across Canal Street. And the idea is that if you're, you know, a northbound cyclist, you would continue, or a southbound cyclist, continue on the sidewalk. There's just, the reason why we have that, and why we don't continue the bike facilities is so we can maintain the on-street parking on the top side of the page, which is the west side of Canal Street. So we would be able to maintain on-street parking to some extent between Clark Street and South Main Street. And option B, we're showing that the cycle track would transition to bicycle lanes on either side of Canal Street. And with that comes the removal, the potential removal of the on-street parking. So we would be able to continue the bicycle facilities a little bit longer and extend them all the way to South Main Street, but the trade-off is that on-street parking. Once you get to South Main Street, the option A and option B are the same. So this is actually a study that we did a couple of years ago now for some improvements, pedestrian improvements at this intersection, which we're also showing on these drawings. And in summary, we're basically recommending that South Main Street be realigned to intersect Canal at more of a right angle, and adding some curb extensions on South Main Street to further shorten the crossing distance. There's, it's a pretty confusing intersection right now, currently, there's like a southbound left turn lane, and some people stop and some don't, so we'd remove the southbound left turn lane on Canal Street and convert the entire intersection to an always-stop control, instead of the sort of mixed control that it is today. Continuing to Malfunction Junction, we're showing here a slight realignment of Main Street and the food, the Brattleboro Food Co-op driveway, we're finding those corner radii, and we're installing pedestrian refuge islands on the Canal Street and the Main Street approaches. On Bridge Street, which the new bridge is gonna go in, and the traffic patterns are gonna completely change on there, so we're recommending that the right turn lane that's on Bridge Street, that allows people to turn Bridge Street onto Main Street, be removed, and the center line shifted up in order to make space for some sidewalk that can go on the other side, especially in connection with the, the new train station that's gonna be going in. So we're showing sidewalk on the, I guess this is, on the east, northeast side of Bridge Street. And lastly, we have a slight revision to Vernon Street, which would be just revising the lane uses. There's two lanes out there today, but we would be changing it to a left turn in a shared through right lane.
The road was that?
That's on Vernon Street, yeah. It's the same, we're maintaining the same number of lanes, just changing the uses of them, I guess. And that's in anticipation of the location of the new bridge coming off of Vernon, and sort of more people taking that left potentially onto Canal, so, so we're changing that to a exclusive left turn lane.
So, on Vernon Street, where you have, there is an existing sidewalk next to the park there, and then when you hit that overpass bridge, it stops, and there's just nothing. There's a sidewalk that just ends. There's no crosswalk, there's no, there's about maybe two-foot shoulder right there that then continues down, because I ride my bike there all the time.
Here.
What?
Other side.
Yeah, other side. Yeah, that.
Yeah.
So, is that the same? Like, I heard you say the way the lanes would shift, which makes good sense, since that right turn lane is not gonna be very busy. But is there any, I mean, I know this is Canal Street, but anything happened there at all? I mean, it's a really narrow section of roads for the amount of traffic that's coming out there from the new bridge.
I know there's a constraint there, that that's historic property, right?
Yeah, yeah. Are you asking, is something happening at that intersection with the new bridge, or?
You're seeing to go south on Vernon Street, by bicycle?
To go south on Vernon Street, you come off of Canal.
Right, make that turn.
Yeah, they are, yeah, they are. I don't, I don't, it wasn't part of this study, I'd have to find, probably speak to Public Works and figure out what the roadway plan is there. If it hasn't been widened, then it's not their intention to widen. I know there's gonna be some tweaking of the, the signals there, but, yeah, going further south on.
Yeah, so crossing at the crosswalk there on Vernon, then I guess the bikes can get on the sidewalk or something.
There's no, there's no separate bike facility.
I just saw the yellow highlights when I started to go.
Well, I was thinking, too, if, if I'm not mistaken, you can walk through the park itself correctly, if I'm wrong, to get onto Vernon. So that additional sidewalk that's thick and that be shaped, push back, you know what I'm saying?
That's existing sidewalk.
Yeah. Because you could, like I said, you could literally just walk right through the park on the right, you're gonna be quick versus.
Yeah, and I think Fiona mentioned in the beginning, we're showing sidewalks everywhere here, but you'll see in the next set of drawings, which are QuickBuild, we've identified which ones are in disrepair, which ones are not the greatest and should be upgraded, and the ones that we're leaving, we are leaving.
We had a question from somebody in the middle, and then we'll go to Arthur, and then we have QuickBuild and Stormwater.
I'm just quick, a quick question about if I'm coming across the old bridge, like on my bike, and coming that way, so right now, there are two lanes, and it's really creepy scary, because you're going uphill, and you want to go left, and so what will happen? You're gonna limit it to one lane?
Correct. But you're not gonna have all that bridge traffic, because cars won't be coming across.
Except for a train arrival.
Yes.
But I'm just saying. Arthur?
Yeah, as a, as a pedestrian at this junction, one thing that I kind of often, that I both observe for myself and other people, usage wise, is that a lot of people cross from the corner of, I guess, Main and Bridge to, to and from the corner of Vernon and Canal. There's that, there's that.
Yeah, that big long walk.
From the, from the, from the east side of Canal Street, up to the, to the east side of Main Street. Yeah, there's like a, there's a, you know, a short section there. And when it's, it's an all-way. It's an all-way.
Scramble, pedestrian scramble.
You know, pedestrian signal. There's no cars going through there. Anyway, I don't know if it, if, if, I just, I see people using it, crossing there a lot, and I don't know if it's worth putting a crosswalk there.
Actually, when you say take that, of course, you're walking.
That's a difficult place, because it's in the middle of the signal, not just the intersection. So you would really need a scramble-type intersection to stop everybody.
That's what, that's what it is.
It works, it works well. You can walk past it all.
Yeah, you gotta do the countdown. Yeah, you gotta know which one is on green, which one is on red.
I don't know if they're planning to keep it that way.
I'm not, I'm not sure myself.
Yeah.
But I think what probably is the intention is, let's see what happens to the travel patterns.
Fair enough, yeah.
And let's see what they have to do with the signal. Because with the bridge project, there's not a specific signal improvement, just a timing change.
Yeah, okay, cool.
Tom?
At each of the four-way stops that you're proposing along Canal Street, besides the one that has the alternate of the roundabout, is there not feasible space for roundabouts at the other ones? Okay.
As a matter of fact, one of, over at Burge, we looked at a wash by a roundabout, and it was just completely impractical. It was pushing into all four quarters of private property. It was affecting structures, plus would have, the warp of it, because the grades just would have made it a tremendously difficult thing to, and that's, that was the second place where we thought we could maybe fit one, and everything else is worse than that.
I'm just sure it's out of flow, but once that bridge opens up, and that's when, just the walkway coming off of Main Street onto that, and they come, people coming out of the co-op, and they come, I'm just.
So, you're gonna know soon enough. Darren from DPW actually, I'm not gonna tell you what happened, but he just wrote that there will only be time changes on the zones when the new bridge opens, but there's a possibility to look at the intersection more for different pavement markings during the class one clearing. So, we'll go to the back, and then I think we need to move it along.
Just in reference to the comment about people crossing in all different directions there, is there a possibility of painting a whole intersection? I think that was mentioned at the first meeting.
Yes, and I mentioned it again on one of the first slides. You know, you could do regular crosswalks, you could do high-visibility crosswalks, you could do colored crosswalks, you could do raised crosswalks, you could do colored intersections, you could do raised intersections, all these things, but they all have a different effect on the rest of the environment. So, you know, something like, depending on how the scramble would work, the, the crosswalks may go away, and the entire thing would have some theme to it. You know? Certainly, that's something that, pretty sure to recommend it here, but certainly we could put that idea, make sure it shows up in the report.
I think it'd be really helpful, there's, I know there's a no right on red sign, and I watch people make the right on red all the time, anyway, all the time.
Yep. Okay.
All right, QuickBuild, this'll be quick. So in this, we're not, we're not recommending, as Dave said earlier, a lot of infrastructure and physical changes. These would mostly be opportunities to re-stripe the road, to minimize the travel lanes and the turn lanes, the vehicular travel lanes, and maximize shoulders as much as possible. But we are recommending areas where the sidewalk could be upgraded, rebuilt, et cetera, widened to five feet to sort of keep it standard. So this'll be much quicker. Next slide.
Fiona, it appears reminding people to that Canal Street, I think, resurfaced in 2025. 2025. So that creates the opportunity to do anything that you need to do with, that you could do with paint.
Right.
To improve the conditions for bicycles.
And widening.
Potentially, potentially.
Potentially.
Paint already has its plans in place and going out to bid, and we're trying to work with them to share these concepts and see what, what might be useful. Right.
So the main thing throughout these concepts is the blue dashed lines and the sort of pinkish dashed lines. So the blue is areas where the sidewalk is functional, so it's not in significantly cracked or in disrepair, but it's a little narrow. It's just not an ideal walking environment, so those are areas where we're recommending to upgrade the sidewalk to a minimum of five feet. And the areas in red, on our walk audit, we found that those areas were cracked, uncomfortable for pedestrians to walk on, so we're recommending that those sidewalks be replaced with five-foot sidewalks. And there's a few areas as well where we're recommending a little bit of new sidewalk altogether to fill in gaps. So, starting in the top concept, this is again, starting at the south portion of the corridor, starting at Generous Street, so throughout, we've got areas of upgrading the sidewalk, replacing the sidewalk. The only exception really is where that Walgreens is, otherwise, you know, widen the sidewalks to five feet. There's an opportunity, as people exit off the highway and enter into Brattleboro, to install some welcome, welcome signage as people enter, and correspondingly, some thank you for visiting gateway signage as people exit and head back towards the highway. Moving towards Fairground Road, we're showing some colored stamped concrete or asphalt sidewalks to create, you know, more of a placemaking opportunity, and to really prioritize pedestrians where possible. We are also recommending that the traffic signal equipment be upgraded at that intersection. It's pretty outdated right now, so that's something that we think is, should be a priority if possible. Continuing north towards Fairview Street, we're showing, again, those, the existing crosswalks, which right now are just paint, that those be zhuzhed up a little bit, colored concrete. And we also have a note to consider at that intersection with Fairview, the RFB, which is a little more cost-effective than a full hawk signal. Again, we know this is pretty important area for pedestrians, with the school being right there and all the commercial destinations, so we want to make sure that that's a safer crossing, if we can make it so. And throughout the corridor, we are recommending that the lane widths be minimized where possible, and shoulders be maximized. So again, no changes to the pavement itself, just doing this with paint. But one example of that is there's a median north of Fairview Street on Canal Street, and it's currently 10 feet, so by reducing that to six feet, for example, you can then widen the shoulders on either side of the street, which if someone, for example, we're not recommending shoulders as a biking facility, but if a cyclist wants to use them, then we, maximizing the shoulders gives them a little bit more room and a little more comfort. It also has the benefit, again, of narrowing the travel lanes, which visually queues cars and, and does have the effect of slowing them down. So that's concept one, as we continue to concept two, which is on the bottom part of the screen. Again, you know, we've got areas of upgrading and replacing sidewalk, and the stamped crosswalks throughout. We show at the intersections with Lexington, Clark, and Belmont Oak Grove, a couple of curbed islands, and those have the effect of creating pedestrian refuge islands for people who are crossing at those crosswalks, particularly near the hospital, since there's an RFB there, there's a lot of people crossing there. And continuing past the hospital, there was some space where we added some potential additional parking, but that's optional and may not even be necessary. As we continue to Maple Street, Pine Street, we're making some recommendations for curb extensions. So this intersection's pretty spread out right now, again, with the high speeds and sightline issues. sightline issues. We're recommending to convert that to an always stop and realigning the approaches of Maple Street and Pine Street to sort of consolidate that intersection a little bit more. And also by adding in that curbing, we can shorten some of the pedestrian crossing distances as people are crossing Canal Street, Maple Street, Pine Street. And we are removing the left turn lanes in this concept on Canal Street and those left turns. There's left turns for both turning onto Maple Street and Pine Street as well. Okay, top of the page, past Maple Street, Pine Street. As we move towards Burge, Washington, as we mentioned, there's some pretty wide shoulders that are used for on-street parking, so we're recommending that those be formalized and striped, so people actually know where it's wide enough to park, so they can do so a little more safely or a little more informed. So we're showing striped on-street parking spaces. Right, in this concept, we're just showing it done with paint, and for the, any of the space that is still between the back of the curb, the curb face, and the on-street parking space, you could paint that and sort of fill in those gaps. Again, we're trying to minimize the amount of curb changes that we're recommending in these quick build concepts. As we continue to Washington, Burge, that's, we have it called out as converting it to an always stop, and we also realigned some of the crosswalks to square them out a little bit more, adjusting the ramps as necessary, and eliminating the left turn lane from Canal Street onto Washington Street to install a pedestrian refuge island. And then, north of Burge, Washington, there are some areas of on-street parking, and again, we're recommending to stripe those in, in a more official capacity. Concept four, upgraded sidewalks, some areas where the sidewalk needs to be replaced. And as we reach Elm Street with that intersection, top of mind, we are, no matter what, we're recommending some sort of cleanup of that intersection, so separating that driveway from the Elm Street approach. So this would be in the form of a small curbed oblong island, and adding in some curb extensions on the south side of the driveway to shorten the crossing distance for people. So there's, that green area is currently asphalt, and we would be converting that to a curbed area. And we've also striped in the parking spaces on either side of the street. People can currently park there, and again, we just want to kind of formalize the parking to make it a little more straightforward where we can. And I think this, this, yeah, this intersection, this concept also has a slight realignment of Elm Street, so it tees up with Canal Street a little bit more rather than coming in at a skewed angle. Okay. And fifth and final concept, we have more areas where we're recommending to stripe in those on-street parking spaces at the intersection with South Main Street. Again, that's still, we're still recommending to convert that to always stop. We have some curb extensions on one of the corners to help tee up South Main Street and also shorten crossing distances. We are putting in a couple of pedestrian refuge islands, and again, replacing that southbound left turn lane out of Malfunction Junction onto, on Canal Street, onto South Main, replacing that with a center median. And finally, on Bridge Street, through re-striping, removing that right turn lane, adding in some curbing, and adding in a sidewalk connection on Bridge Street.
So, so in general, most of this could be done with striping, and even some of the median work wouldn't be pedestrian refuge, but it could still be painted medians and not require construction. The only things in here that would require physical construction is where we have bump outs, and we were very judicious and only put them where we thought it was very important to do. So, again, a lot of this could be done with zero, zero construction. Now, the sidewalks, that could be a sidewalk program that each year, you know, 500 feet of sidewalk gets done, or something like that. But this is a tool that could help identify the sections that are in most need at the time, so. Okay.
Two questions. Is there any concern that traffic will get backed up? Because it won't be the right-hand turn here anymore, right?
The left-hand here.
I mean, the, the left-hand turn, so is there concern about traffic being backed up into that intersection?
At times, it backs up now, but yes, that's certainly a possibility that that will be worse.
But again, there's gonna be a different traffic pattern because the bridge will be closed.
That won't matter so much. From the south street, anyway. Yeah, or from Main Street to Canal.
I see what you're saying. Okay, great.
Again, I think another thing that's an important caveat is these things, you know, we, we have some limited traffic volume data. Some, we've collected in previous studies, some were from the state, some were from other studies. So, in part, part of the next level of design of any of these is really to do the detailed analyses. For instance, always stop control, we want to make sure that we at least have some semblance of the volumes to warm doing it. Sometimes you could do it because of sightline issues in one of the locations, that's why it's being recommended. But you can't just put them in willy-nilly, because then people don't pay attention to them. So if we put a stop sign, we gotta make sure we have at least a model of traffic coming out of the side streets. So all of these things are analytical piece that need to be followed through with in the next, next phase of any of these, as these projects go to the next step. The V-Trans will be involved, you know, clearly, it's a state highway, so it's, you know, they'll be involved, they're gonna wanna see the analysis, they're gonna wanna see preliminary designs, we're gonna have to do surveys, all of that. So that's just, it's important, it's important to understand that.
Alex?
Could Jersey barriers be used as pedestrian refuge islands there? For instance, there? If they were, like, if you had two Jersey barriers, and then there was a gap where a pedestrian could walk across and have, you know what I mean, to form an island, and then you had two more, so that the cars would see barriers and not, but a person could stand behind it between them, do you see what I mean?
I suppose.
Because I mean, I'm just thinking of something better than paint, which is, there's not a pedestrian in Brattleboro who would just stand in the middle there and think that they could.
Yeah, and the barriers, they're not cheap either, and they, they do need to be anchored, and then you gotta protect the blunt ends, so they don't become a hazard in their own right. So, yeah, I mean, there, there may be treatments that aren't curbing and grass or pavers or things like that. There are other treatments that could serve that purpose. You know, you could leave it flush and put diaphragm on it, and then you just have to protect the one end of it. So, there are other options.
In this set of treatments, a quick build, is, did you speak to a, a general theme for shoulders or bicycling, shadows, or consistent shoulder width throughout the corridor?
Well, we, the shoulder width is gonna be as much as we can get by minimizing the lanes. And the lanes, quite frankly, aren't that oversized today, so we're not getting a giant benefit out of it, but we would go as, as narrow as V-Trans would let us. 10-foot left turn lanes is pretty common minimum width. An 11-foot travel lane, you might be able to get 10 and a half feet or something like that. And so, in some places, that would make the shoulder go from one to two, in some places it might make it go three to four, but we would maximize whatever we can get there. Okay, so this, I'll, I'll go through this as quickly as I can, but this is, these are the pre-pictures of what these things might look like afterwards, and, you know, in addition to all of the engineering plans and all the analyses, we would have landscaping plans and placemaking plans that would be approved. But this, this is taking a look at what the, what the roundabout might look like, and what's different from the engineering drawings, you can see that we've shown how we're affecting other properties, how we'd get closed up and what it might look like, where we can gain some other areas. This area, now part of it is the right turn lane, which is out there now. So this, this gives you an idea three. There's a lot of things you can do there. We have a picture on the, the next slide of what we're showing it could be, and that's the median there, and we just, our LA's just said, oh, that, that, we like that, that would be a nice gateway. And so we show them, welcome, Brattleboro welcomes you, and on the flip side, you could have your Brattleboro thanks you, or something like that. But you could see that this is really creating a visual, a mood, a palette, so it's, you're here now. So, let's go to the, the next one.
We just have a quick question, which is, why are we not starting at the southern end of Canal at Exit One, or at least at the Circle K gas station? And the reason is that we're looking at the town-controlled segment of Canal Street, of Route Five. Richard?
The roundabout, is there enough room for school buses and tractor-trails to go around there without having to go up on the curb?
This is a full-size roundabout, and 99% of vehicles, including school buses, couldn't traverse this. We put this band here, because occasionally, there's larger vehicles, and we don't want them to get gridlocked in the middle of a roundabout, so we give them the opportunity. This would be what they call possibly the, the cade cod curbs, where you could mount it and then get onto a solid surface for your, for instance, if it's a wide level or something like that, or a particularly long vehicle, or... So we're not designing fully for that, we're designing for 99% of the vehicles, or more than that, yeah, more than 99%. This is what we looked at, at Burge and Canal. So here's the laundry to give you some perspective, and this is more of an illustrated version of what the intersection might look like. And what we, we are looking at here is these are two development parcels, I think Carwash was approved there one time recently, and this is looking at a different land use, what it might look like with 20 municipal, in this particular concept, we did 20 townhouse-type of apartments, and we wrapped it along the far side of the parking in here, and then we have this additional entrance here, and the reason would be because there's some of the uncontrolled parking, so to speak, in front of and around Canal Street for the laundromat, for the laundromat. So this gives quick, easy in-and-out parking spaces for the laundromat. So, and this, lastly, this is, if we had a landscape architect with us today, he would stand this slide for 20 minutes. I'll go quickly. The types of things, when we're, when a palette is developed, the way it'll be developed is the town will look at palettes such as this and get some recommendations from landscape architects and things like that, and look at, well, what do we, how do we want to treat the road? Do we want this kind of crosswalk? Do we want that kind of crosswalk? How do we want our, our medians and refuge islands to look? What do we, what is the planting material when we do curb extensions and things of that nature? They're gonna be looking at different paving options. Some of these are more appropriate in more of a village setting than on an arterial, but nonetheless, there's many options from, from tuminas to concrete, to scorched concrete, stamped concrete, to pavers, and things like that. The other thing is what type of vegetation, you know, we're creating these green strips, and what kind of vegetation do we want to see in there? Are there areas where it could get wider? We looked at that, that kind of overlooked area where there's parking now, I forget the, the name of that, that section on the west side of the road, where we, yeah, where we have the opportunity to kind of spruce it up a little bit. You know, something like this may be where we put, when it comes to fruition. Other things, we mentioned lighting earlier on, and lighting is important, you know, it's important for two reasons. One, at a very basic level, you want to have intersections lit, you know, even if lighting is poor on an arterial such as this, you want at least at crosswalks, at, at cross streets, in major commercial driveways, you want to make sure that they're, they're easily visible to the driver. But you can also go further and have a theme, you could have themed lighting throughout. So again, that's the streetscape element. Some of the other things that might bring it together, and this could bring it together town-wide, you know, something as simple as trash cans, you know, what do they look like? Do they look the same on Main Street as they do on Canal Street? Bike racks, so, street signs, trailblazing signs, benches, things like that, so you can create a palette of Brattleboro stuff. And so people will, will know, once they, they get a feel for these things, they'll, they'll know that this is Brattleboro Borough's look. And that could be continued from what's already been developed elsewhere in the city, or it could be created here and something that continues on.
Do you have areas like charging stations added with that, too? Like what they look like?
We don't have charging stations, that would be more in the parking lots. But unfortunately, it's, it's tough to put lipstick on those things, because they are so mechanical, it's like a gas pump, really. But what you can do is beautify the areas around it, so that you don't feel like you're on a, in an EV island. And I think that gets us to stormwater. So, I'm gonna stand back here.
Brian's been waiting very patiently for this moment.
Yeah, so who's ready to talk about some stormwater? So, starting with this, this first slide, it's really an overview that looks at the focus area of the study, primarily along Canal Street. So, our concepts look to improve the drainage, but also provide some stormwater treatment along the Canal Street. And then the other area that was a focus area is around the kettle pond, which is shown in the, in the rectangle there. So, we kind of split it into three different areas of priority. The darker blue line would be potentially a first priority, that's where a lot of the existing storm drainage issues are today, both with the capacity of the system, but also there's limited stormwater treatment there. And then, the other area has a second, potentially second priority, could maybe be switched with the first, but would be around the, the Fairground Road intersection, and the idea there is to really couple it with some stormwater treatment at the kettle pond, which is another area of, of interest. And then, the lighter blue colored line would be the, would be the third priority to complete the stormwater upgrades. And then, just to mention, you know, there are a lot of street... And then just to mention, you know, there are a lot of street systems that come in from the, the neighboring and adjacent streets. So those systems would need to have their own treatment and could be a long-term plan. But the idea and the focus of the Canal Street system would be to treat the stormwater from Canal Street. So just quickly going through some of the, the goals of each of these priority areas would be to reconfigure the drainage system, increase its capacity. One of the components of the first priority would be to disconnect the diversion that I mentioned earlier. So to do that, you would need to increase the capacity and make sure the system between Burge and to Elm Street could handle the, the stormwater. Right now it splits at the Burge Street intersection. And then look to incorporate the water quality and treatment measures along the way. The image here on the, on the slide is a, a catch basin with a deeper stump and a, what we commonly refer to as a hooded outlet, that those are meant to try and pre-treat the stormwater so it settles out some of the sediment and debris that's floating in the, in the stormwater. And also one thing to note that, and as part of priority two, we're looking at reconfiguring and increasing capacity at the Fairground and Canal Street intersection. But some of the treatment proposed around the kettle pond could be implemented separately on their, on their own, they're somewhat independent. But the remainder of the drainage systems in Canal Street would really need to be implemented in, in conjunction with the bike pad improvements along the corridor. Not so much a quick fix as we talked about earlier. So again, some of the conflicts that we were dealing with as we're looking at some concept designs is, there's lots of utilities, including sewer in Canal Street, so those would all need to be worked around. And we would anticipate that there could potentially be some conflicts that would require some relocation. We also talked about the right-of-way limits, and as you could see in the, the cross-section views, most, if not a little bit more, the right-of-way is being used for the bike pad improvements, which led us to a lot more of the subsurface treatment measures. Although where there was some space, we did try to propose above-ground type of systems where we have bioinfiltration. Or tree boxes also work well, and that's what's, an image of that is shown here on the slide. These can be either trees or shrubs, depending on where the setting is. But the, they're designed to filter stormwater. Excellent. So these are some of the, some snips of our concept plans. The blue lines indicate where drainage systems would be improved. Pipes would be increased in diameter to increase the capacity and reconfigured to match the, the new alignment of the, of the travel lanes. The green areas are areas that we're, are showing that could potentially be used to treat through bio, bio-retention or bio-infiltration. And they would look to treat some of the existing or the new impervious around those areas. And then the blue dash lines that you can see in the image here would be a subsurface treatment measure under the walkways. And where there's infiltration, we would look to take advantage of that, now if the soils allowed it. But otherwise, they could also be an under-drain, which would help drain water out of them if, if it's not able to infiltrate. Move on to the next slide. So this would be continuing down from Burge Street towards Elm Street. Again, the system would be upgraded. Shows two outfalls that currently exist there, where we look to stabilize those outfalls. And then this image also incorporates some tree box locations in the, in the curbs there. The little green squares, if you can see them. And then just moving further downstream towards Main Street and Canal Street. Again, reconfiguring to increase the capacity of the system, really to work with the, the realigned street and intersections. So this view kind of shows those cross-sections that we talked about earlier and how the drainage would fit into those. So in the orange section, you have the, the gray inlets where the stormwater is captured along the gutter line or the curb line. You have a pipe network that carries the water downstream. And then in areas where the terrain is flat enough to allow these infiltration chambers, they would be placed under sidewalks or the cycle track. And really that's there to promote infiltration and, and treat the stormwater in that way. And they're all also fitted with overflows. So that if there's excess water that they can't handle, it continues on downstream. So we also, I mentioned, we talked a little bit about treatment at the kettle pond. So there's several drainage outfalls. There's five different drainage outfalls into the kettle pond. And we looked at gravel wetlands in, in some of the areas that were, included smaller drainages that would allow a gravel wetland to be utilized. But also the school property drains to the kettle, kettle ponds. We looked at bio-retention areas and subsurface infiltration areas. So here are the five different outfalls. The, the color coding indicates how much drainage and how much water treatment is, is needed. So you can see there's three green, green colored. And then the yellow and orange indicate that these are much larger drainages that require much larger treatment systems. So here's an example of what the gravel wetland would look like. So the water comes in at the, the pipe outfall that you can see there. It filters through the rock into the main part of the, the stormwater basin where there's soil that absorbs and filters the stormwater. And then it drains out the, the outfall on the, on the downstream end. And here again are some snips of our, our concept plans. This is one of the areas where we're looking at a gravel wetland. So the water would come down from Marlborough Ave in a, in a rock swale. There's a forbay that settles out some of the debris and sediment. And then the main treatment system or cell, and then it would discharge down into kettle pond. And here's another example at the opposite corner, southeast corner of kettle pond, somewhat near the, the town's sand and sand pit. And a third that would be on the southwest corner. So this is near, somewhat near the high school down on Wilson Woods in that corner. So here's a, a concept of some treatment that could be implemented to treat, treat the drainage that's currently discharging to the kettle pond, but from the school. So the green areas would be the bio-retention areas. And the, the green in the upper right-hand corner of this image was actually proposed as part of the 2023 Stormwater Master Plan. And then we, we were wondering, or we were proposing the other green area on the left as a treatment, a potential treatment for drainage that's originating from like the tech school area. And then in the parking lot, there could be some underground storage used to treat the stormwater. However, a lot of this drainage comes from like the Market Thirty-two and some of the developed areas upstream. So it would be a combination of, you know, private and public drainage that you'd be treating in this, in that system. So as I mentioned, there's several side streets that would also require some treatment in the long term to, to help with the water quality and stormwater quality. And some of the ways that you can do that is to look at, you know, smaller scale rain gardens or subsurface separators. So a lot of times you can use either a swirl separator or a more robust filtration unit. As you can see, the separators are expensive, as well as the filtration units. The filtration units would be something similar to what was proposed and I believe will be constructed at the Depot Street and New Train Station, sometimes referred to as a jellyfish. And what, they actually have filters that help to, to filter out and treat the stormwater. And that's what I have on the stormwater.
Thanks everyone for your attention. Endurance has been a long meeting. This is just a wrap-up to remind you what's coming next. So you've given us a lot of great feedback here tonight. We've taken notes. We're gonna refine, make some refinements to these concepts. We'll post things. We'll post this presentation, so please share it with your friends on the story map. So if you could move the image down a little bit. You can take a picture of the QR code here and go straight to the story map, or you can note the URL there. We have it linked from the town's website too.
If you go to brattleboro.gov and you go to our projects page, it's like one of the first projects up. It's linked straight from there, so.
And you just shared it actually recently because you did the PR piece. Yeah, when she put out the, the meeting, it's on there, both those things, so, yeah.
Excellent. Great. So please do, encourage other people to take a look at it. Sue, I think you said you'll, you'll entertain further feedback for the next few weeks?
Yeah, yeah. The, our state partners, this project has been funded by Agency of Commerce and Community Development, V-Trans, and Department of Environmental Conservation. They're doing a technical review on it as well, so I'm happy to take more comments. They have at least thirty days for that, so.
Did you do a technical review of these conceptual plans?
Richard?
So is this project all part of the, other piece of the, the V-Trans going from Cutney Road all the way up Canal Street, is this?
So that's, that's actually what we're trying to, so that's a paving project. So they're really only working within the right-of-way paving and restriping. We are hoping to share these concepts with them and where feasible. Some of them might, at, at least the quick builds primarily, maybe they can roll that into their plans. You know, they're not doing bump outs or curb extensions or any medians in their paving project. But we're hoping, you know, if we want to narrow lanes and widen a shoulder, that there's still time to get those into their plans.
What about four-way stop kind of things?
Four-way stop would be the town. And so, yeah, some of those things, we've talked about in Traffic Safety Committee, like a four-way at Burge Street and Washington. So those are things that.
But they wouldn't like restrip it the way it is and then we wouldn't have to go back and try to erase paint?
Yeah, we don't want to erase paint.
I'm well aware now.
Yeah, things like that. You know, we'll, we'll begin those conversations.
Right, right, great.
Could the cycle track happen as part of the repaving?
I don't believe so.
Because it has to be, there's curbs involved.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Is there time for questions and comments on the stormwater?
Yes. Does Brian have some time for? Yes.
Yeah.
Are you still there, Brian?
We live on Wilson Woods Road near the kettle pond, not as near as Norah Neighbors, but there's just a lot more raining water these days and also in our future. And so I'm curious about, you know, some of these, for every pond of like the, the bio-solutions, do those just reduce the amount of water in addition to treating it that would end up in our neighborhood?
Yeah, so they do help attenuate some of the flow that comes into them. And it, it helps with downstream, but these would primarily be treatment. A lot of times you want to have more attenuation further upstream in your watershed. And it helps the downstream areas a little bit more. And this is pretty close to, you know, it's at the outfall essentially, so. And there, where we've shown these wet, these stormwater wetlands, it's smaller side systems that can handle, you know, a smaller system to treat it.
Yeah, I mean, the wetlands sound great. And yeah, anything you can do is wonderful. The kids in the area want to play in it and all the parents are like, oh my God, don't. One parent says your skin will melt off your bones and of course the kids want to go find frogs. And melted, there's just no way to keep people away from it. So yeah, anything you can do to prioritize thinking it up or just reducing water that comes down and being degraded, so thank you.
Yeah, and the wetlands are, are designed to drain after the storm, so they may fill up a little bit while it's raining. And they're typically eighteen to twenty-four inches of water. And it's really designed to filter through the soil underneath and drain out after the storm. So there's not a pool of water between storms, I guess.
There's a question for Brian. I'm forgetting the terminology, but downhill or closer to Main Street of kettle pond, there was proposed infiltration systems underneath the bicycle paths or the sidewalks or right beside the road. And I assume since you're proposing them, this is something people do. But to me, it seems that that might be tricky as far as frost heaving or, you know, putting a whole bunch of water into the ground a few or several feet below pavement that we want to be smooth. I mean, I assume it can be designed well so that doesn't happen. Does it, is there kind of a balance or a give and take with, with having that and, and having a, a shorter lifetime of your paved infrastructure above and here?
Yeah, it's, it's certainly a concern and something that is taken into consideration as far as where we allow these to just infiltrate. And a lot of that has to do with the underlying soils. If they're quick-draining soils that can accept a lot of infiltration and stormwater, then that's some, you know, that's some, that's a place where we would look to try and infiltrate. If not, you can still get some treatment. But if you look at the image here, you would have a, a pipe down underneath, an under-drain underneath the infiltration chambers that would drain the water, essentially drain the water away after it's had a chance to filter through some, some level of soil underneath. So that's, you know, that's all driven mostly by, it can be driven by exactly what you're talking about. Do we want to infiltrate water there? Or the soils, if the soils are not capable of accepting the stormwater, then typically we would include an under-drain that just continues downstream after it's had a chance to filter through.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say, I mean, one thing that we, we talked a lot about the cycle track tonight, but we also saw a concept where it could be bike lanes on both sides. but we also saw a concept where it could be bike lanes on both sides that were broken. So I, you know, I understand it's late. I would love some feedback on that. And I'll try to push that out to get more feedback. What do people think of the cycle track concept?
Do you want to put like a survey, like yea or nay, or how do you want?
No, I just, I mean, we could do a quick show of hands, but it's not necessary. I just think if, if you want to think about providing some feedback on that, I would appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you all.